All right, Dr. May, turn the board meeting over to you.
Okay. Good evening. Glad to be here to share some items with you. As is the case every November, we've got our MCCA. This is our statewide conference, annual convention. It's in Bradson. So please look at your schedules and see if it's something that you are able to participate in. November 18th is our next board meeting. And we may be able to go back to our boardroom at that point. But isn't this lovely? How they have updated this area. You're going to see you've been approving furniture and tables and things and paint and carpet. You get to see it firsthand. It's a wonderful upgrade. And then I was informed because of supply chain issues. And there's a couple of RFPs out. If we wait until January, it'll delay us getting some of the materials that we need. So we are going to suggest a December board meeting. And it is on schedule for the 16th. Our student success report. At our retreat, we had a discussion about trustee Skaggs brought forward about an article about students, male students particularly. And that evolved into students of color and how they're struggling, how that enrollment group is struggling nationally. And so we had a good, robust conversation. And there was interest in learning what we do for those students. So we're going to give you a presentation on that today. If they would approach the podium, Mr. Terrell Tigner and Dr. John Perk will share their both at thesis student development at our campuses. And they'll share some of those strategies with us.
Thank you, Dr. May, President Skaggs, members of the board. Thank you for giving us an opportunity, a few minutes this evening, to share with you some of the work we're doing with our students of color. I'm sure that you see some of the data that Dr. May likes to share. It helps us answer the why question. Why are we interested in this? You can see that our completion rate, our free year completion rate, there's a gap between our students of color and our white students. So we really want to try to address that gap. Dean Tigner, who's done a lot of work on in this area, is going to tell you about some of the things.
Right. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. So preparing students is a big part of our mission here at NCC. And you can see here on the slide that we have some ways for students to get involved to help them prepare. You can see on the bullets there are some of the programs that we have across our campuses and district. And those programs allow students space for fellowship, learning, work opportunities, mentorship, and more. You can see on the pictures up there too, some of the involvement that goes on, including Dr. Tom Meyer. Also creating opportunities obviously is another big part of our mission here at NCC. We just touched on opportunities a little bit on the last slide. So with the support of Dr. May and our executive cabinet leaders, we've been able to provide some great opportunities for our students. You can see there on the bullets here, some of the things that we have done. We have our real talk sessions, even something as simple as that really engages our students. Where we invite speakers to talk to our students. And that includes even those like our very own Dr. Larry Duff and trustee Reed, who also participated. So thank you all for that. We also have had the opportunity to send students to some awesome conferences, nationwide conferences, like the Black Brown and College Brown Conference in Florida. You can see in the pictures there, you have Dr. Reed here with some students. You have Christopher Cho, our director of student success, there with some students. And then in that picture down in the bottom that you may conceal a little bit, those are students standing there with Endeavour Mandela, who is the grandson of Nelson Mandela. So they had an awful opportunity to meet him as well.
So looking ahead, a couple of items we want to focus on. One is that we really want to get more of our students involved in these opportunities. We think they're important opportunities to connect with our students and help narrow that gap. Key to this engagement with our students is to increase the mentorship opportunities for students of color. We want to dig into the data and learn as much as we can to try to make sure our programs meet the need that we have. And then, of course, we always want to assess effectiveness of these programs. So those are the things that we're going to be doing as we move forward. Terrell always wants me to talk about the Men of Color Student Leadership Institute, which happens to be tomorrow. He is a presenter. We happy to respond to any questions.
Sorry. Got one more slide here real quick. We wanted to wrap this up with a personal student success story. The student that you see on the screen there is the Bill Abasi. He's an NCC alum. A lot of people may know the Bill already, but he's actually over at U of I C now. And his last semester there wrapped in a bachelor's degree. And he also is over the Men of Color Program there. But Bill wanted to be here this evening, but has some other obligations. But he said some quotes here that I'm going to read to you. The Bill said, "I struggled in high school and wasn't sure if I was ready for college." He said, "After starting at NCC, I got involved and tried out the Men of Color Program. And it was then that I felt like I come at home." He said, "My experiences with NCC, NCC Penn Valley, and my mentors there has meant the world to me and is the biggest reason why we're here today." So we wanted to make sure that we share those stories because this is really what it's all about. That's our presentation. Do you have any questions?
So 20% completion rate less than white students. Is that right? Is that what I saw on the first slide?
I think it's 20%.
20% less completion rate, right?
Right.
Yes.
And it's a what are we? You said you guys are looking at the data. What's are we? Do we know yet? Or what's, why, why is that?
So part of what we'll be doing, we're taking an intentional approach in these upcoming years through our equity and inclusion work. Having focused group discussions, not only with the students, but with our faculty and staff, requiring some, getting some cultural competency training. But we're having the conversations. Now we have the hard data. Now we need to talk to them to find out.
But we don't know the why.
No, we don't know the total why. We just see this and like, okay, we need to do, we need to dig a little deeper and feel that.
So I'm sure there's been other institutions that have studied this, I would assume.
Yeah, and you know, the, with the, and we're so, not that this is something to brag about, but we're not alone in this. I mean, nationally, this is a trend. But what, what we do know, the areas that do it well are the historically black communities, historically black colleges and universities. The systems that they have in place. And a lot of that is creating a cocoon that wraps around students. It's the analogy that I like to use, having experienced it myself. They have graduation rates, they have completion rates. They don't struggle in this area. And so I, in my opinion, and I've heard this referenced quite a bit, that's the model that we could and should be looking at. But it also starts with us diversifying our faculty and staff as well. We've got some real gaps there. HBCUs don't just have black employees, of course, and they don't just have black students. But they're a little, a lot more closer to the representation of their student body. And we've got a lot of work there because I think that also has an impact. But again, I think we will talk to our students to find out specifically. But there are some successful models out there and HBCUs is a.
I'm just talking about Hispanics, the same thing.
Right.
It'd be nice to, I guess I'm just looking at this data and put it away. I want to, I think it's important to understand why that is. So would there be follow-up on that after?
Will do.
Yes.
This is because of my poor eyesight. Sorry. The references under the why are based on the majority student completion. What is the majority student completion rate? I can't remember first.
Oh, so for 2017, so because this is a lagging measure. So 2017 for white students is 34%. For Hispanic students is 24%. And for black African American in the same year is 14%.
So overall, it's only 33%?
Oh, yeah. Let's deal with that. Yeah. Which is.
That's for two, usually for the two you agree.
Correct. And that is below the national average. So there's some peeling that's onion there. There's some strategies that absolutely are proven and work. And we're working with our faculty and staff and implementing those things.
I assume that the assessment of the techniques you're going to try will of course also be, it's going to be a lagging measure, but it will be based on the percentage change of completion. Is that what you're looking for?
I'm sure that's one of the things that we're going to be trying to prove, that gap. So I'm sure that this official research office will help us develop the best measures to get at.
You know, with these activities, and I think a lot of us have this experience. These are, they can be contributing factors. We don't know that students' participation in the Men of Color Program is what led to them being more successful. It could be a contributing factor. I mean, because when you wrap up all of the things that we could and should be doing, all of those contribute to the success. It's difficult to point to one program and one thing, especially if you don't have a comparison group, right? So, but to do nothing is irresponsible.
Nothing correlation.
Yeah, correlation is good.
Well, and our, just our community needs to look like our community. Whether it's black, white, you know, girl, boy, whatever it is, right? They need to, they need to be represented.
First, I want to say thank you for bringing this issue up. And Dr. May, I want to say thank you for you as well bringing it before the board. And I think it's an important issue. I brought an article from 2008 when we talked about reforming schools in Kansas City, Missouri, because they're uncredited. And you can see the same arguments being replayed over and over with no solutions, even now. I also brought my legislation that I had as education as an economic driver. You may giggle. Ask another state legislator if they've ever offered a bill to help our schools. But here's my point. I think there, there needs to be a special attention. And trustee Reed had a chance to go to some schools that were developed and some programs. And we didn't have enough of those programs to go around. But you can see results. I mentioned what Trent asked, his question. If we could follow up on, on these meetings or follow up on your program. And if we could look at programs that exist that have been successful in other states. And maybe we can hear more about what it is that they're doing. And then also, I never heard of your program. And there's a reason why we had kind of a firing up in our last meeting. I've never heard of your program. So if I've never heard of it and I'm a board member, I don't know if any high school kid, I work in, I work with the public and I work with teams. I don't know if any of my teams have ever heard of your program either. And so I think we need to be in the, involved a little bit more in secondary education so that we can pipeline these kids. So they're not going to be prepared, I think, by the 12th grade to compete with white students. So again, I'll appeal to the folks here who can hear me about considering the idea of working with our secondary schools so that we can build a recruiting and kind of refining skills program for those kids who may have dropped out or given up. And then pipeline those kids. And we start, we need to start with the family courts, the juvenile justice corrections. We need to start with some of that data as well. And I'd be happy to get off my soapbox, Dr. May. Thank you, Trent.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. I'll just add, I think that, one, thank you all so much as well. I have comments. No hard questions. I met with someone earlier today and they mentioned sponsoring, something very similar to what we're talking about. And some opportunities that they're hopeful to write a big check for to help those in our community that could potentially benefit from this. So I look forward to following up with the chancellor a bit further about this program aboard because they are needed and it's important that we're offering them. So I just wanted to add that.
But I'll add to close this out in my mind is that this past year, I think is a good example of what can be possible. We had a college-wide persistence challenge. Because we know our data. We know that our students aren't returning in the way that they should or could. They're below the national average in some of those areas. So we had a persistence challenge. I think that was led by the vice presidents on the campuses and everybody was engaged. And so we did see some movement. The point I'm getting at is you might do something to target or be intentional with one population or for one cause, but it ends up helping everybody because if you systemize what you're trying to do. And it's just, it's going to, we're, we're moving in that direction. There's some culture shift that comes along with it, but we're going to continue trucking through. The persistence challenge is a good example.
Well, you can tell there's a lot of interest on this board. So I think we should revisit it and revisit Dr. May's goals, evaluation. That should probably be one of the items. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, now we move on to the informational items. And our first update is regarding capital projects. As we have things ongoing and they keep going on, you'll see, you'll be reminded of some things, but we want to keep them fresh on your mind because some things will be coming forward soon. Dr. Michelle.
Thank you, Chancellor May, President Skaggs, members of the board. This evening, I take the opportunity to go over the capital projects update and call your attention to the middle column that talks about construction percent complete. And if you're aware that we opened the engineering technology building. And so that is now in full occupancy, but we still haven't made the final payments for that facility. But the progress on the other two facilities really allows us to be able to make the statement that the capital projects are on schedule, on budget, and approaching occupancy. The other two approaching occupancy for the week 2022.
We, in addition to facilities, wanted to give you an update on our custodial plan because of project planning that will be coming forward. You might remember, for those of you that were on the board two and a half years ago, we went to outsourcing our custodial. We went with a hybrid plan to ensure that we maintained all of our employees. That contract is going to be coming to an end next month. And so we want to provide you with some updates as it'll be on the agenda next month. Michelle.
Thank you, Chancellor, President Skaggs, members of the board. This evening is this, as the chancellor alluded to, is I'd like to bring the information back to both members who were here, as well as the new members. Can you just go through, what's happened since we started this quest? And where are we at this point? So what it did was is it broke down into this, you know, in the box. You'll see the fiscal year 192021, the budget that was actually there, and then the actual expense. And we take the actual expense and we break it down into, how much did we spend for our in-house services, our own staffing portfolio, as well as then what we contracted out. And what you start to see is in 2021, just due to the migration towards the overall model, you will see is we're now crossing over. We're spending more in the contract, the contract vendor, as opposed to in-house.
And are they able to staff right now?
They are. You're talking about the contract vendor? Yes.
I think we didn't obviously know COVID was coming, but I think that's huge. I mean, I think the fact that we don't have that responsibility on staff.
Right. And one of the things that was nice about the contract vendors is during the pandemic, they were able to retool and go into pandemic mode. They actually bought the equipment in the event that we needed it to come in there and ionize the rooms, et cetera. And custodial kind of went less, but they spent more time on the sanitation and everything, et cetera. And now, a few quirks starting up this fiscal year or this calendar year.
Academic year.
Academic year. This semester, transitioning from sanitation to full custodial. And so we've got a few hiccups. But has the facility, have they approved from where they were before?
Yeah, I mean, I would say yes, but I think it's also somewhat too soon to tell because we're just coming back into full occupancy. As he said, we had some bumps. And so we worked through those bumps to get to a point where we're not just focused on the sanitation back to the, because just like everybody else is getting accustomed to coming back, they're getting accustomed to everybody being back. And so I think we were working through or have worked through those bumps.
Can I ask a quick question before you leave this slide? I assume that the actual in-house involves both the material that is used as well as the first mail call.
That is correct.
Have the number of in-house persons declined?
That'll be the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks for the segue.
Before that, I wasn't here during that transition time. So could you remind me the vendor that we contract with for the custodial service?
Citywide.
I'll say it. Yes. Thank you.
You bet. So to answer trustee Martin's question, as well as the rest of the board, we'll put up a table just to kind of give you a feel for this is, you know, the first, or is the square footage, just wanted to make everyone aware that we're cleaning 1.2 million square feet over five campuses. So just kind of give you an impact on that. The next one is the custodial, the 10 custodians and the custodial supervisors. And it kind of addresses trustee Martin's question is how many in-house people do we really have at this point? We have 13 on the books at this point. But there is a near future plan that that will decrease to eight. So what we have is the.
Due to promotion and retirement.
Yeah, due to promotion and retirement. And that's one of the pride points that we have is the middle column, the maintenance mechanic assistance. You'll see that those nine will actually become 10. Those 10 maintenance mechanic assistants were previous custodians. And we put them on a career path to go to the next level as a maintenance mechanic assistant. And we're now working through the process to land an apprenticeship program. But we're going to take those maintenance mechanic assistants, after they get through the apprenticeship program, will be qualified maintenance mechanics. So that's, that's all part of the, quote, the attrition program. So, yeah, retirement and a career path for individuals to actually have a future. And then complementing that is not only due to the migration, or part of the migration plan is this addition of new space. I mean, we just talked about, we added the engineering tech, the Penn Valley, Advanced Technology Skills Institute, the Blue River East Expansion, which is brand new space, Broadway Plaza. Three of the two, three of the five floors used to be occupied by Concord. We now have them. Those are now coming back under our jurisdiction. And we're going to spread out and we're going to be seeing a plan where we're going to spread people out there, which will not have to clean. And then the relocation of the final element sitting in the MCCBT, which is the print shop, we would move it out to HSI so we can successfully sell. So again, just to remind everyone, this is as three major capital projects start to come to a close or wind down. This is one, make sure we remind the board that there are other capital projects that are coming out to our horizon. You can start seeing the elements coming forward. So tonight, we're going to bring you the central plant improvement equipment. The reason that's coming forward, you'll see in January, we're going to come forward with central plant improvement project. This is, as the chancellor already mentioned, this is, there's a long lead time on this equipment. If we want to get this equipment installed or ordered and installed by, by next summer, the cooling period, we need to get on the ball now. And that's why we're kind of making this happen. And so you'll see in November, we hope to be able to bring forward Broadway Plaza, HSI, Print Shop Renovation Project, Automotive Institute at Longview, and Fitness Center Addition Project at Maplewood.
It's not, I'm not sure if it's capital. But if you look at this, you're like, oh, why are we meeting in December? Oh, I'm not reading anybody's mind, but in case that is emerging. The, so we have some per dollars, which are those federal dollars for COVID. They have to be spent by May 22nd. And if I'm not mistaken, I thought they were capital, but maybe it's other equipment that comes out of facilities that's out on the street forbidden. If we want to get it by May, that's why we are proposing in December.
And then this is just a real quick stand shot of the first project I already alluded to was the, the expansion of the fitness center in Maplewood. Just a real quick rendition is the existing sports complex. If you look at the diagram on the left, that's the little rectangle that's added right to the north of it, along with some parking space. And a little bit more detail showing you the overall picture to the right. You'll be getting more details as we bring this project. But again, just to kind of remind everyone, this is what's coming up on our horizon. And then this gives you a real nice picture of, this is a rendition. Familiar with the Maplewood campus, the sports complex is that brown building in the background. This will be sitting in front of it, is the addition to it. And then gives the layout of what's actually in that space.
Any question? I neglected to mention at the beginning, in your, at your seats, you have the annual save the day for the Martin Luther King luncheon. You can get your tables today, everyone who's listening in the audience. It's always a great event. Last year, we raised $10,000, I believe. It all goes directly to students. Okay. We want to provide you in November, we are, our plan is to bring a recommendation for a new strategic plan. And so in preparation for that, we have Dr. Joanna and Mr. Ed Foley to present where we are going and where we are with the strategic plan.
Thank you, Chancellor, President Scott, members of the board. Ed and I have the privilege of walking alongside a great chancellor and wonderful colleagues that are very, that are very important for us to stand in the cast of the adoption of a new strategic plan for the organization. So it is good. It is auspicious. It is delightful to be here. Behind what Ed is going to present is thousands of combined hours by you, the board, the staff, faculty, students, and community representatives who contributed to the adoption, to the development of this plan. Equally important behind the scene is advice that the chancellor, the council of the chancellor, in the direction of the chancellor has provided. Thank you.
President Skaggs, members of the board, it is very good to be with you in person. I think the only time I sign virtually last time. I want to start off with, we began this process with two key tenants. The first is if it gets measured, it gets managed. It doesn't say it has to be measured and managed, but anything that's measured and apparently focused and we manage it. The other is strategy. It's all about choices. We have limited resources and we have to choose what's going to have the most impact. But there's a third tenant that's represented on this slide. And that is the intersection of these three rings. We want to be integrated in what we are doing and lift all of these components up to have the greatest impact. So that's what I'm going to share with you as we go forward. This is the initial timeline that I shared back in September of 2020 with all of you. The thing that I want you to key in on is the very left side. All of those items that are listed there. We put a tremendous amount of effort and emphasis on gathering insights, perspectives, and data. And I'm going to share that with you now in the summary in the next couple slides. We began this process and I set the target. We began this process and I set the target in my mind of I wanted to engage our internal employees and get one thousand comments. And then I heard about five texts. Doing five more reps, taking it times five. And I thought, boy, could we ever get five thousand? Well, the comments showed up and they showed up in a big way. We did almost thirty virtual charrettes, held many different meetings, and ultimately we had five thousand nine hundred and thirty nine qualitative comments that have gone into the foundation of what we're going to be sharing with you. Additionally, we engaged external stakeholders. So we went out to the community. We started off by interviewing thirty six key opinion leaders. And when I say a key opinion leader, those are mayors in various communities that we serve, superintendents, some CEOs, lots of industries represented, and this was done by an external researcher. And it really helped us to get an initial sense of where we wanted to go deeper and gather more specific data. We then conducted some surveys and that's what led to that significant amount of data that we gathered. Uh thirty eight thousand one hundred and ninety eight comments. Here's where we ultimately have have reached. And this is a continuum based on the balanced scorecard for strategic planning, which is what we are utilizing now at the college. And it begins very simply at the top. That's the mission, that's why we exist. Very pleased to have worked with you all recently at your retreat and we talked about the mission extensively. You don't change that very often, you don't change why you exist very often. But we evolved that slightly and it's a great thing. Values is another item that through this process, through the input of all of the stakeholders, we realized it was an opportunity to bring that to to the college. And so we have now a set of values that we want to share with you. The vision is the desired future state. A lot of information guided us to identify a new vision that we work with you all on at your retreat. But ultimately, what is the game plan that you use to impact and get to your desired future state while staying true to what matters most and true to why you exist? And that's your strategy. So the strategic plan, and finally, at the very bottom is the foundation. What holds all this together, what intersects all those rings I showed earlier is the work in operationalizing of this across our college by all of the different planning units. They identify annually goals, a specific tactic, multiple tactics with measures that drive all of this work to impact everything that goes on. So with that, I want to make sure and and just reiterate that we are an organization that is embarking on a very important step here by becoming a balanced scorecard organization. And some of the world's most recognized brands utilize this approach and some very uh well-known community college systems as well, including the entire California system. So we're pleased to be a part of that. Finally, what brings this all together, you have a copy in front of you, is what we call our balanced scorecard MCC Strategy Map. And you'll see that it is all starting at the highest level, like in that video I showed, with the mission and the vision. And once again, we work with you all. In the center is the core, the playbook, and those are the strategic themes that I that we 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 identify from all that data, but also very importantly along the side that 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 transcends across all of this work is what we hold most important to us, and that is our values. But we will never let go of those. Finally, at the very, you know, foundational part, are fourteen organizational roles. And we've organized those by stakeholder perspective. That's what identifies this as a balanced scorecard strategy map. You want to ensure that no one is being left out as a key stakeholder. So we have the students, alumni, and community piece, the organization as a whole, our resources, how we manage and stay financially strong, and finally, our most important asset, our employees. But at the very bottom is that foundational component, once again, the institutional effectiveness plans that lift all of this and the day-to-day, daily, weekly, monthly, yearly work that happens to realize those goals that impact all of the items that we are trajectory toward that right, upper right-hand quadrant is based on. Our next steps are, we are currently, I was very fortunate to get to share this at the employee in-service. And we have offered up an additional two weeks for employees to provide input. We gathered a lot of data, but we want to be absolutely sure that no stone has not been turned. And so we've we've got an employee comment period, we'll take all of that information, make any adjustments that might be needed, and then you'll be receiving uh the final opportunity for adoption. I didn't get some questions.
I want to applaud Ed and Amy, I think that joined him or joined his team. He's done phenomenal work. It's it's been a lot going around and having all of these conversations, thinking about how to create a frame for it, and he's done an excellent job.
MCC is truly out of your history to see this new mission, this new vision, and the fact that we're now marking on this for a ten-year commitment, excited to be here. So thank you.
I think I shared with board and I'd like to share with everybody that while it's a ten-year plan, there are annual operational, we plan for annual operational plans by uh unit. And then we'll have a, what we'll call a baby well check in five years to see if any of the uh strategies need to be revised. So it'll be, as this one was, a living, breathing document that we will continue to consult. All right, it's our annual insurance coverage and
I'm a year again where it's time to renew our insurance coverage. Um our insurance coverage expires December thirtieth and renewed on December thirty first. Uh what you see before you are last, the last three years assessments, credits, and premiums paid. The assessment is currently being conducted at MCC. We have music coming uh to do a full property walkthrough in the next two weeks or so.
For those who may not know, what is music?
Music is our insurance, Missouri United Council for School Board. Um insured. Um and the assessment is based on total property value, uh total payroll and workers' compensation, and obviously it fluctuates based on whether there's decreases or increases in payroll, increases or decreases in our footprint and footprint and property and the amount of workers' compensation claims that we get. We have before you a projection of what we anticipate will be um our new assessment. We added three percent based on discussions with music. And so we anticipate roughly one point seven million will be our assessment. Because MCC is in a high deductible plan, that means we just pay twenty five percent of our assessment by December thirty first, meaning we play our higher deductible whenever we have to file a claim. And so our projection is that that's roughly going to be four hundred and three thousand dollars. Um based on conversations with our insurance provider, they project a credit for a hundred and twenty one thousand. The last few years, credit hasn't been anywhere from eight to nine percent, that is across the board for all institutions or all of their members. And so we predict that it'll probably be around the same as well, and that's where you get that credit projection. And the excess umbrella liability liability coverage is looking to be about fifty thousand dollars as well. This will cover our cyber school board liability, general liability insurance, auto, workforce compensation. And so we plan to bring this to you in November. Hopefully, the numbers will be completed by then. Uh since we have a December board meeting, I guess we have some wiggle room if necessary.
It's probably going to be the same question, but as we're growing, you probably see there's going to be a higher number. And but I like the idea of adding the computers and and some of the other number line.
One of the things we heard from the insurance provider was that because of the large amount of cyber attacks at various institutions, that that created um some reasons for why insurance premiums have dropped.
Some more basic questions. Could you just tell me again? Project, thank you. Project into credit.
So, excuse me? That's my question. Yes, it's projected credit.
What is that?
Um that means music as the insurance goal, they look at what they've accumulated from other institution and what is left over. And that's their projection of what they give, they credit back to all their institution.
Is it a toll?
Correct.
A coma, oh yes, okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go into the regular agenda items and we'll get our monthly expense update.
And the chancellor, President Skaggs, members of the board. This evening, I think the opportunity to share with you the budget to actual expenses by budget unit. Again, I call your attention to the very bottom of the right column, which gives you a total of twenty percentage of twenty point four percent. And this is our first quarter, so the target would be twenty five percent, so we're well below our target. And just really kind of giving a nice projection, showing that we are well within our limits. Again, this graphic, I point out that as we progress through our cycle of receiving our revenues and doing our expenses, uh the line being our expenses and bars being our revenue. We are doing very well in our economy this, as we proceed through this year cycle.
The IT may have strikes again.
Just a real quick update on the bond expenditure update, uh again, and certainly can go through it in the detail, but I call your attention to the total column. Really showing that we've already, we have committed and expensed twenty four million dollars of forty two point seven million dollar bond, which is about fifty six percent. If you look at the eighteen million point six that's left over, uh you've really kind of looked at a way to expand it. Uh but with the gifts coming in and the perk dollars and the federal dollars coming in, we're constantly looking at ways to really kind of supplant and work, replace those dollars and bring it back and look at other projects that we can go forward with.
All right, uh we've got the set agenda items. Our foundation has director appointments to folks that they want to add to their foundation board, Tammy Edwards from the Federal Reserve. And uh Steve Manazos with Skills KC. We've got a couple of items from external sources, I think it was one faculty member and an administrator, if I'm not mistaken, for the uh resignation uh for personnel. Contact tracers continuing to do that, we're still doing that. In addition of turf turf mowing and uh maintenance. And uh if I may, Mr. Chair, I'll pull, I if I, I don't know if I can pull it. The classroom replacement furniture that was actually put on there in error, the cost, the price of it is over what we have a mutual agreement on that would go on consent. We got a slip sheet with designation of signature authority. Uh there was a change in the amount of the signature authorities there.
All right, then we'll go ahead and turn the work session and I'll go ahead and call the meeting of order. And welcome everybody here. Um we're on to item one point five, which is the chancellor's report.
Uh been appointed to the HLC Task Force for um they're revamping how they uh do things with the accreditation. So I'm excited to be able to participate in that. Uh that's for this entire region. I think there might be uh seven presidents that are participating in that. And I have been selected for the Shirley Chisholm Greater Good Award. I think somebody that is on the line is their speaker and belongs to the uh National Congress of Black Lives Matter and may have had something to do with uh my nomination. I appreciate it. And uh that is Saturday, November sixth, that that is occurring. Um I thought I'd just flip this in and give our trustees an opportunity to share any um thoughts that they had about the conference week. It's a very good conference, a lot of good sessions. And if you had any reflections that you wanted to share for those that
I do hope at some point we're going to embarrass Jermaine.
Yes.
Okay, but not yet.
Not embarrassed, she's gonna make some
Don't embarrass yourself.
Okay, um the overall theme of the conference really struck home because it was DEI. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I hope we can keep that theme active throughout this year because I came to realize that perhaps some of our fellow colleges are much further along in how they are realizing that than we may be. And that's not a reflection on anybody's leadership here. It's, I think it's a word, so that was my takeaway. And I'm, I'm talking about us as a whole.
Ellen, uh we've had several conversations along that line. And uh I I didn't mean to pick on our staff, but the the name of this conference was this is based on social justice and a lot of the Black Lives Matters issues that are facing our country and the Great Reckoning. And so a lot of this was important to me, so I was really uh in, I was really feeling good about the conference and what they're doing. Uh so no disrespect on your programs at all, I'm just wanting to ask that like Ellen was thinking, maybe to broaden our our scope in the sense of how we might approach the subject matter. Uh one thing I remember, uh a couple of things, um first, and there was a college in Wong who was able to partner with the governments because they needed skilled labor on Navy ships. And part of the, they were offering um were these uh were the covering we talked about, the AC, I think you mentioned the scribe. And they pipeline these kids all the way to these jobs, twenty, thirty dollars an hour. And then part of the deal was a school training more teachers. They had thirty teachers in the school. And so not only were they pipelining students, and the government was just throwing money at them, can you do this, can you do that? And they were just building this workforce, and then they were training teachers to go out and and just to repeat. And then they would have people from the Navy train the teachers, and then they'd go out and train the student. And it was just, it was just building momentum. In an area that had seen a lot of loss economically in jobs. Uh and they were trying to reinvent themselves in terms of how can they assist the people where they are and how they were struggling. And they were, their argument was, a lot of time, boards are stuck in offices and they're not really talking to real people, everyday people. And so they assume a great deal about what they think about the people, but they were trying to churn that on its head and find out where the people are and then find out their needs. And their number one argument, you know what it was? Uh junior college is not the center of their lives, of these students' lives. Uh which is amazing to me because we think somehow we're the center of these kids' lives, we're not. And the other thing was, I met this author and she's a a team building expert. And and I got her autograph, and then I won that in the meeting, but um she had developed a strategy for boards to work together better as teams and focus on the issues and not get sidetracked on political and personal issues, which I thought was fascinating. And this board, they would clip together, working on their strengths that people know about, the difference in personality types and how they might communicate more effectively and listen more effectively. and how they might communicate more effectively and listen more effectively what other people are saying. And then implement it more effectively, not that they heard what the other person had said, it was very empowering for board members. So I brought the book and I wanted to, I probably want to read it first, but I was going to give that to you, Dr. Bailey.
I have one on my shelf.
I got one, but this lady, she was very dynamic and I wanted to suggest that maybe at some point we do a board retreat again or a team building exercise, we might invite her to come in, talk to us. About how we might work together and communicate more effectively and listen a little bit better to what we're saying and not forget what we had just said the next month, because we're getting TV, TV is getting involved. To keep that going, that's just my support on that. No disrespect to our people, but some of those schools were very, very dynamic and assisting people. The same people that we're talking about, you're struggling, we've been left behind, not a lot of thought is wanted to how do you reach them, how do you get them? Thank you, thank you. Oh my gosh, Jermaine, trustee Reed, thank you. So there was a, there was a school who was doing agribusiness. They had bought, they were changing the employment habits and they created a restaurant. They created food pantries, they were doing urban, organic food, growing food, feeding their people in a food desert. They owned their cafeteria, and I think they were also supplying the restaurants in town. And then they were also doing, we talked about this one time, about doing a conference center, the school with the services, like the hospitality services, the culinary services, the growing, it was booming, this thing was huge. And, you know, I always, it takes an example, I think, to see. As we, we talk about it, we theorize, we think it's a good idea, but then when you get to see it in practice and it's working, it was really eye opening, very, I don't know if I left anything out.
Well, that's why those conferences are so important.
So thank you for letting me talk about it, those conferences, I try to take advantage of those. And I'm glad we have a chance to go to the board and represent, I think we did well this time. Talk about Jermaine or are you going to do it?
Go ahead, Dr. Bailey.
Yes.
I had two take, first I want to, we did a presentation ourselves, Dr. Jackson, our associate vice chancellor for IT and trustee Washington on leading through an educational tsunami, us doing the cyber, going through the cyber attack and COVID at the same time. So they had us at eight o'clock upstairs, back up in the corner, so the 10 or 12 people that attended passed the test because they were fine. But one big takeaway along the lines of the data that we saw earlier, that I had, one of my colleagues, they talked about how they partnered with the foundation to do a persistent scholarship. So that the scholarship was designed to pay off, pay off the debt, like it was $300 or less. They found a threshold of people who weren't returning because they owed money. And they said, look at these students, it was $500 for them. And they found the money and paid off the debt so that those students could come back, so good ideas. And drum roll please. Oh my gosh, don't tell me.
Yes.
Oh my gosh, I'm talking about it, where is it? Oh.
Phone into your ear.
Oh my gosh, oh my gosh. Well, drum roll please, our own, our own trustee, I don't know what happened here. Our own trustee got elected to the ACCT board, so we had now have a national board representative here at Metropolitan Community College. I don't know what happened to them. Oh, they're dead.
Background information up remotely.
Yeah, there it was, it just was there. Anyway, so he is serving a one-year term, he will run again, but I will tell you that it was something. He surprised everybody, you know, surprise, surprise, surprise. He, grandma would say, up, jump the devil, or no, angel. But it was, I think the election went for two or three rounds and he, he, he got the, got one that spot, so. Any comments from our newly elected national board member?
Yes, I figured I'll say the best relax, right?
That's right.
One is, I want to say thank you to all of you because it definitely was rewarding to be able to go to the conference. And while I was able to attend last year virtually, this was the first in-person meeting, so it wasn't as if I knew a lot of the people in the room. And knowing no one in the room, but having to get up and give a speech about why community colleges and within while would be a good board number. And then been taken off the ballot at one point. And after four rounds, winning with over 100 something votes, and the only vote I had was our vote up on MCC. And Senator Washington was that vote. And any, if anyone knows Senator Washington, you know that she did what Senator Washington does when she goes anywhere. And she was amazing, and so. Ellen, you and Michael, Dr. Jackson and Dr. Bailey, I appreciate you all showing up to the swearing dance ceremony. But look forward to representing MCC learning, but also sharing along the way. It will be a lot of work, but I've served on a few national boards before, and so I'm excited about this opportunity to serve. Don't think that I'm going to do it alone, I'll be bringing you all along with me, so thanks a lot.
May I ask just one thing, Polly, you made a speech to the group. Would you please take another of that speech, and you know what it is, and share it with the rest of us, because I think there was a real message.
Absolutely. I understand, I understand, because it's important that you all understand this.
Let's expedite this, Jermaine.
So I'm going to take my mask off, so you can hear me on this, because this is actually, it'll watch me. And although while in the second round, I knew going into this that the gentleman who probably should have won from college, who came in, he was well prepared, and he said to me before I went up, I don't, I don't, I don't have a separate speech here. No problem either. And so I ended up saying, I talked about having run public office before. So luckily, my 20 fathers, so to the city council, and my late grandfather, this is the nominee, trustee Martin was talking about. I asked him, Grandpa, are you going to vote for me in the election? And my grandfather said no, and I asked him why, and he said, because you didn't ask for my vote. Therefore, I asked everyone else in the room, because I did with my late grandfather, will you vote for me? You know, it's the most, I think that was the worst, he cleaned up the community college, cleaned up at other colleges, cleaned up at the hospital and as a first generation college student, so.
New York.
New York City.
Yeah, yeah, this time next year.
This time next year, but there's also legislative conference in DC, and then the summer conference will be held in Brent. All right, Dr. Bailey?
Okay, we had our in-service, we had our command center upstairs, it was, I gave the state of the college address. I had my own angels there, and we had lunch, people were able to, people went to different campuses. We separated by campus, and you went to a different campus and not your own. People were able to sit outside, have lunch, we had some tabletop activities regarding students and how we could support students and how we could support employees, what am I not doing there? Something's, I'm not doing something right? I'm doing it right now, sweetie, thank you. And then, so I had my angels and people were sitting outside eating lunch, so it was very successful. Redistricting update, I don't know, I didn't put Josh's name on here, but Josh, would you give us an update, please?
Certainly. Chancellor Bailey and members of the board, we have, we've had our committee formed and put together. We, as you know, you submitted, you appointed three people initially and then submitted five names to the state. And then they approved three of those five names, you see them all up here, we reached out to them, we're working with our service provider, Arc Bridge, who is, who actually did the 2010 redistricting plan, so we have a leg up on this. And they are already hard at work looking at data and putting together an initial proposal to kind of give something to the committee to play off of. We've set our first two meetings, one will be coming up November 19th, the day after your board meeting. And then we'll have a follow-up meeting December 6th. Depending on how those two meetings go, there may be a need for a third meeting, but we are working feverishly to make sure that we get that done. Our deadline is to have our plan ready and prepare to go for approval with the state coordinating board of higher education at their March meeting, and we have to have that in by February 1st. And our, we feel very confident with the group of people, I'm also working with Sandra Garcia, and we're reaching patent on this. And we've got a good group and they're eager to get going and things are working and we should have some interesting information for you down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, that was me putting him on the spot, you did a good job. We had some conversation about the, we had a request from the board to get an update on the nursing program, so she's already there, Dr. Lee.
Well, good evening, board members, college community, Dr. Bailey. My fellow members, my colleague, Leanne Towns, will give you an update on our nursing program. So we have two types of nursing programs within MCC. One is our associate re-nursing, which is our current program. The other one is our licensed practical nursing program. Within our ADN program, there are two ways you can finish, you can go in the day or you can go in the evening and weekend. So if you're in the LPM program and you want to go into the ADN program, there is a bridge opportunity for you. So you can take some courses over two semesters to transition into the ADN program. So I want to spend a little time on our practical nursing program. For our new board members, that in 2019, Dr. Bailey and I just happened to be in Jeff City at a state board, Missouri State Board of Nursing meeting. And we learned that there were about nine efficiencies that had not been addressed for over 10 years. Nine efficiencies, 10 years, they had given us multiple opportunities to do so, they had not been fixed. So what happened, they put us on moratorium. Moratorium means that we could not have been any students, and we had 3,002 members and a director. We came back, we made some changes, and now we are off moratorium, and we have about 14 semesters now in that program.
What's our capacity, how many can we have?
Up to 25. So this is the structure of our nursing program. We have, you'll see some vacancy going here, so it has been a challenge for us to hire an administrative assistant. And it's also been a challenge for us to hire nursing families, because right now there is a greater demand for nursing, for nurses in the hospitals. So in our ADN program, we have three vacancies, in our LPM program, we have ADN three, LPM one. And I'll turn it over to the end.
MCC in this slide, this illustrates student ADN program enrollment that we have over the last five semesters. That starts in fall 2019, which is actually our largest row there over the last five semesters. And our smallest this semester, 209. And what you see in that first row is the day ADN group, which is our largest cohort. And those numbers include the students who are admitted all the way through, the students who are ready to graduate. In the second row, you see the evening weekend ADN program, those numbers are fairly static. We have about 17 to 19 students in a given semester in that group. And then the third row are our LPM, the ADN bridge students. You notice those numbers are variable, in the spring of 20, we didn't admit any, any students to the bridge program. We had a low applicant pool that semester, and so what we did was we combined that with the fall 20 semester and to increase our members for that just a little bit. So overall, between fall 2019 and fall 2021, our largest number has been 267 in the program at any given time. And our lowest is at 244 this semester. So this slide shows the number of students that have graduated practically a year in our evening program. And we had 109 in 2018 and 2020, and we had 111 students who graduated in 2019. Now this slide shows three different areas of student achievement data. In the first grid, what you see there is retention rate percentage in the program. So in 2008, we had 86% retention rate, which is soon as you start and complete the program. And you'll see that in 2019 and 2020, we're in the 90th percentile. In the middle group, this is, these numbers are related to our licensure exam passage. And these are for first-time takers of the test. And what we have is a benchmark or expectation for the Missouri State Board of Nursing, that our students meet at 85% or grab more pass rate, and we have that they see that over the last three years. And then in the last group there, last part of the chart, what you see is our job placement percentage within six months of graduation. And we're in the upper 90s on that. Now this is information regarding our practical nursing program enrollments. And so just to explain you what cohort one and cohort two are, is that at any given time, we always have two cohorts that are active in the practical nursing program. Cohort one would be the new admitted students, and cohort two are the groups of students that are nearing graduation in the last half of the program. And just to kind of tackle into what Dr. Lee said, fall 2019 and spring 2020 is when the program was on moratorium. So we did not admit and have a cohort one in those two semesters. Now we did have a cohort two because we have students that had admitted in spring of 19 that were finishing. And of that cohort of 23, there were four students who either withdrew or failed and who completed in the following semester. So you can see fall 2020 is when we started admitting, we're up to 14 students at this time. So this is the number of students who graduated practically a year in the P N program. We had 14 in 2018, 19 in 2019, we had 34 in 2020, we had four students. And this chart is very similar to the ADN chart, and this is for the P N program. Our retention rate percentage for 2018, 19, and 20 was in the 90th percentile from 9 to 98. Again, this program, and that center chart does have the expectation for licensure pass rates of 85%. And you see in 2018, we were slightly below that. That was as it would mean to work with some of the expectations of the state board of nursing, and then you see 19 to 20, that we were in the 90th percentile. And then the last slide here is the job placement percentage, and we have been in the upper 90s to 100 on job placement for our P N graduates.
So what is on the horizon, so we're going to do two briefings. The first is we're going to expand our nursing program, the ADN component for non-traditional students. And then we're also looking to develop and keep approval for evening and weekend program for our last practical nursing program. What we found is that we have individuals who are adult learners who want to go into the LPM program, because on the day, they tend to go to Donovan College and not come here. And then finally, we have two upcoming credential visits. And then finally, we have two upcoming credential visits. One from the, the Commission for Education and Nursing, and the other one from the State Board of Nursing.
Is there a waiting list for admission to the program?
Um, no, there's not currently, although we do have a, we don't have enough applicants.
Thank you.
So we always look at the T M A as a center for healthcare. And that's where all, a lot of the folks with the big dollar donations go and, and a lot of attention. But we're sorely missing, uh, medical kind of, uh, training in, in the Kansas City side things where St. Louis, you know, they have Washington University, which is just awesome. And they get a ton of funding when you're about to build a new facility. Um, what, what are some of the issues that, I know the COVID shut us down, but, and then we, we kind of we're kind of in a doghouse a bit. Um, what do you think are some of the issues that we could do to increase our numbers?
I think that part of the reason I remember you down right now is because we have a non-traditional statement. And these students have children and a lot of them were struggling with the warline issue. But we were just very happy to be able to offer an opportunity for our students to continue in the program.
And maybe my question's weird. Like there's a, there's a great need for nursing. And then we're having a hard time supplying that need. And then we have a program for nursing, uh, assistants and, and, um, some of that stature is growing even the Bay. And in some places they're graduating early because of the need is so great. Uh, they're, they're just putting them right to work. Uh, are we facing anything like are we involved in anything that is recruiting some of these young people that are needed so desperately?
We do do recruitment. Yes, we have, uh, information sessions. I know that we work very closely with the counselors. Um, we have a lot of high school students who come to our information sessions who are interested in our program. So yes, I feel like we, we.
I would add that like our police, uh, academy, these are fields that right now, given pandemic and our social justice issues that aren't as attractive as, uh, they used to be. I mean, there's a shortage. And people who have the jobs are leaving. I mean, it's just, I think that's a driving force.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Thank you. Uh, please, surprise.
Good evening, Dr. Bailey, President Scaggs, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing Administrator Association's time to update you on the positive things happening at MCC. October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Our IT department is serious about our security culture than vigilance. Considering MCC's two thousand and twenty security incident, MCC is requiring all employees to complete no before cyber security awareness training by November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. The awareness training will help users and employees understand their role in adding security breaches and mitigating risks. In close collaboration, the offices of institutional effectiveness, institutional research, and diversity, equity, and inclusion are hosting DEI surets this month and will continue through November. Great feedback and rich discussion that emerged from these conversations. Student DEI surets are being planned for spring twenty twenty-two. The DEI office is also working on collaboration with our trio program. From the Office of Institutional Effectiveness, one hundred percent of all executive cabinet member jurisdictions submitted an institutional effectiveness. All right, that's serious on my watch. Um, institutional effectiveness plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two cycle, demonstrating MCC's commitment to continuous improvement. The Office of Institutional Research and Analytics is implementing a new data warehouse and analytics platform to provide data on demand. The first dashboards have been created and focused on key enrollment metrics and top enrollment drivers. More dashboards are in the process of being created to help guide and inform institutional decision-making. And finally, our programs are preparing students for successful careers. Tonight, I highlight the Blue River Campus and the efforts to provide opportunities to our police academy students to interview with multiple police departments. On September eighth, thirteen students interviewed with seven departments. Represented were Lake Ladawana, which was represented by MCC LI, as Boone County, Bonner Springs, Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, St. Joseph, Blue Springs, and Harrisonville. Through various events, our students have had the opportunity to interact with thirty-one different police departments. Eleven of our major program students have been hired or are currently in the hiring process. Several of these offers result in primary interviews. Students will have another opportunity to interview on this number four. On November twenty-second, MCC Blue River will host a Fire Academy Professional Development Day, featuring breakout sessions on resume writing, interview prep, mental health, and a session with MCC HR benefit reps entitled "More Than Paycheck: When to Consider Giving a Bell Order." Also included are mock oral boards with local fire professionals and a fire department expo. Family students from our Penn Valley Health Science Institute are also invited to attend the events. The administrators of MCC are proud to represent a college that supports our students from enrollments to job placement and strive to continually improve the MCC experience for both employees and students. Thank you for your attention.
And what a great way to lead into the final thing to highlight our employees, the MCC Masters on the move video that we showed the bid service. We want you to see just a snippet of these stories.
For me, MCC was a great fit. The construction management program and the grounds and turf management programs that I went through, as well as the Associate in Arts program were great fits. It's also where I met my wife. Uh, I think the biggest part is just how long MCC has been a part of my life. My mom, Cindy Johnson, actually, who just retired this summer, started working at MCC when I believe I was eight or nine years old. I have two older sisters that are both graduates of MCC and have two sons who I look forward to someday, hopefully being graduates of MCC. They're three and five right now, so they've still got a ways to go. The most satisfying thing to me, even though it may be a small role, I mean, whether it's just making sure the heating and cooling in a room is right, or just, you know, giving it our all to make sure we've done everything we can do. I feel like I can say that I play a small role in the success of our students.
I was a child of a single mother. I lived in Hawthorne, which is a housing project on Twenty-four Highway in two ninety-one. Very, very impoverished upbringing. And I saw absolutely firsthand the difference that college made in my life. And the reason I feel so connected to MCC and to my students, and the reason I wanted to stay specifically at Blue River is I very much see myself in my students. I see their potential because I am them and they are me. Community colleges educate one half of all college students in America. And we deserve a place at the table. We are important. Uh, we often talk about the importance of universities, four-year institutions, IVs and what have you. But community colleges educate half of the college students in America. We matter.
I really appreciate the aspect of teaching and learning and student engagement. You know, that's really why all of us are here. No matter what our job title is, uh, it's about the students. Education doesn't end when you get your degree. You have to be willing to learn continuously. Because we all can be taught something new. Or maybe a new way of doing something, a new way of thinking about something. Uh, keeping an open mind. I, I start out with the phrase and I tell, I tell my students, justification for higher education. MCC, in my humble opinion and my experience, is a great place to learn. It's a place where you can figure things out if you don't have them figured out yet. It's a great place to start.
In July of two thousand and thirteen, I started out as a temporary. And then December of that year, I was hired on as a full-time paralegal. And I stayed in the legal department doing that same job all that time, doing contracts. I like the fact that my skills match my responsibilities. And that I have the support of the chief legal officer and the associate general counsel. I would say that MCC is a stabilizing force and a connection for quality of life. You have to have life balance, work, pray, play, sleep. People who are entering the workforce, I would say, remember everything you do matters to someone. Respect the people you work with, even if you don't respect their opinions or their actions. And remember that all human work is dignified because human beings do it.
My name is Clint Johnson. And I'm the Facility Services Superintendent for the Blue River and Business and Technology Center campuses.
Hi, my name is Kim Glacken, and I teach psychology here at MCC Blue River.
My name is Lyle Gibson. I am a professor here. I teach, uh, history classes.
My name is Pam Tyrrell. I'm a paralegal in the legal department.
Dr. Bailey, I'll go on to the consent agenda. And I'm going to pull item five point eight percent agenda, which is classroom replacement furniture. I'll take a motion to approve the consent. Second, the second of all favor say aye. Motion passes. We're going to do treasures report. Don, anything more from what we reviewed earlier? Dr. Bailey?
We reviewed the report earlier. I don't think we have anything additional to add.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve. So move to the second. So, all favor say aye. Passes, but I have five point two. Multi-function devices, Dr. Bailey?
This is an opportunity for us to provide or continue providing network printing services to lease uh, equipment. It reduces costs. We, uh, went through the bidding process. Our final offer reduced our cost by two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars uh, for existing equipment. And, uh, we're also requesting an additional fifty thousand to accommodate any needed equipment that might happen as a result of the additional offices and space that we have, uh, coming available to our recommend.
Take a motion to approve. One more, a second. Discussion. All favor say aye. Passes, right, five point three.
Uh, CNC laser. This is in our, um, uh, computer integrated machining and manufacturing program to help, uh, achieve what we need in those classes. It's the two new machines to replace the machines that are out of date and require too much, uh, funding to repair them. We also, these are recommended by our advisory committee members who say that this, these, this equipment will keep us with, uh, current with industry standards.
I'll take a motion to approve. Is there a second? The second, any discussion? All favor say aye. Motion passes, I have five point three. I'm sorry, five point four.
Uh, same situation in terms of welding equipment. This is at our, uh, Advanced Technical Skills Institute that is opening. The bid includes, uh, grinding room, uh, three pieces, branding, three parts, branding room tables, weld position, weld positioners and welders. And the overview of each one of those is here. We did a, uh, a compiled item here since it was all within the class of the welding equipment.
Motion to approve. Second, a second, any discussion?
President, thank you to inquire. Uh, Dr. Bailey, uh, on our skills training, are there non-credit hours?
We do have some skilled training programs that are non-credit and also credit. Uh, this is for a credit program. I'm not sure if we have a welding non-credit program just yet. Does anybody, Sue?
We are currently in the process of practicing your funding for a mobile welding, um, non-credit program.
And would that be like a certificate at the end of a certain amount of time and they get a skills that maybe they qualify for? Maybe an apprenticeship or something like that? That's the goal. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Thank you, Trent.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. We're going to item five point five, Dr. Bailey.
Five point five is for the, uh, Penn Valley Central Plant Equipment. Uh, normally we would get a, uh, design, do the design process before getting, uh, the equipment, but the lead time given the supply chain. Um, and we want to get this, uh, done over a certain period of time. We're putting it, uh, doing this a little bit out of the normal, uh, process. So, uh, we went through this process to get this going early with hopes of getting the equipment in time to do the work. And I think it's otherwise pretty straightforward.
I'll take a motion to approve. A second. I think you had a question.
If I may, uh, Chancellor, this really isn't a question about the awarding, it's Fagan. I've been reassured it's the lowest and the best in the engineer consulting. But when I was looking at the respondents, I recognized how close three of the respondents were. Two, uh, Fagan is doing business in Kansas. Two are Missouri businesses, one of whom has an M E designation. And it reminded me again that we do have, I assume, someplace in the purchasing manual, a preference for Missouri businesses. And it's a percentage. The other two respondents, two Missourans, are within about two point five percent. But there's something like a five hundred dollar cap, which in this day and age is small change, you know, means nothing. And a one point four million dollar. So no reflection on the purchase choice here, that's fine. Could we revisit that and see if there is a way to perhaps make a realistic opportunity for Missouri businesses?
Yeah, I, uh, think that is something that we can take through our governance process, the CPRC, to get a recommendation on either a straight percentage. Um, we can get some indication from the board, their pleasure on that, and bring that policy back to be revised. I know this has come up before. Uh, that cap of five hundred dollars really prevents us from doing too much, uh, change. And perhaps a straight percentage would be a better route to go.
I certainly respond. Just for clarification, all right, I know the answer to this. But, um, in making a decision for a vendor, a designation such as MB is not taken into account in the selection. Is that correct?
That's correct. Lowest and best.
Thank you.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. We're going to item five point eight, which was the item called Consent Agenda, which is classroom replacement furniture.
Which you happen to be experiencing today. We're asking for additional authority for four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to continue our furniture, uh, replacement. We've been doing this in, uh, pieces. I'm sorry, additional spending authority of eight hundred and eighty thousand. I was looking at the wrong, uh, portion here. Um, we've been doing this in pieces. And I think I asked, in your books, there's a chart. I asked, uh, Don's team to provide, is it in there? Okay.
Oh, it's in the sleeve.
Oh, it's in the sleeve in the beginning, so that you can see how, uh, the dollars that you have already approved and where the furniture is going. The top part of this chart, I think you have the copy with my handwriting on it, has been, uh, those top three were for new buildings. And then the others were classroom refresh and some other things that we were touching up. That's it, that's it. It's in your sleeve in the front of your book. The chart, yeah. So the furniture, this is the new ass. Um, this would be additional classroom refresh, office chairs, like the ones that you're sitting in. No, maybe they're not like these. Those are office chairs. And campus common furniture. And we're doing, uh, a lab refresh. So I just wanted to chart out for you, anticipating that you might want to know where the furniture is, where those dollars are going to, and wanted to get ahead of.
Is there a second, any further discussion?
I had just one question concerning the, uh, numbers. The, uh, so the, the increase is a, a, and then this page shows the expenditure so far, where they're going. Are these two numbers, uh, are they two separate numbers?
Yes, so we have, this is probably our third or fourth, third time at least coming back, uh, ask, uh, for furniture. So we're showing what we've spent so far up in the top. And then the bottom shows with, that's why I have new ass written there.
I see.
And we're only asking for eight eighty because we still have some dollars and we are estimating what those costs may be. Since we order in bulk, we're hopeful that we can get it, uh, more around that price. And it's likely that we'll come again with some additional, uh, ask as we, those HERF dollars, uh, what he mentioned earlier, uh, what Don mentioned earlier, uh, regarding the bond dollars and the, uh, campaign and so forth, as these dollars come in, and it gives us an opportunity to reallocate and upgrade and refresh the furniture across, uh, across the college. So we're taking it in phases so we don't over, I don't want to say overspend, but exhaust certain pots of money to design for certain things. Uh, so we, we have to do it in stages. Did I explain that?
Well said, thank you, Trent.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. One last item, five point nine, Dr. Bailey.
Uh, this is on call services to enhance our, I mentioned the science labs. Uh, we had a couple of trustees sell first hand. Uh, that's what I thought, that's what I was saying. I'm gonna come, I'll come back to that. Well, point of order, uh, there wasn't a motion for five point eight, the first and the second.
Oh, so move, for a second. All favor say aye. Take a motion passes.
Sorry. Um, for five point nine, um, we're refreshing, um, science labs across the district classrooms and common areas. And so, uh, on-call services to do the electrical painting and L E D lighting. L E D lighting, uh, for those, for those, uh, labs and classrooms.
Anything else, I'm ready. Nope. Right, I'll take a motion to, Dr. Bailey, five point nine. So a second, second. Remove the second, any discussion? All favor say aye. Motion passes, put on the ally of health agreements. I mean, that was under consent, correct? Yep. So we, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, second, all favor say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.